Pastor Brian Knight from First Baptist Church. Pastor Brian Knight, there he is, Pastor Brian Knight. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then he'll lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Listen, if I leave, it's not because I'm offended. I got things to do.
We're small potatoes, Pat.
Is that alright? Bless pray. Heavenly Father God, we ask you, Lord, just to bless this evening, the meeting that has gathered together in assembly. We ask you, Lord, forgive us where we fail you. And ask you, Lord, just to give them discernment, give them clarity, help them with their discussions, Lord, but also, because they are stewards in these positions, help them represent what they need to represent, Lord, and be convicted to make the decisions appropriately. I thank you for this crowd, Lord, that is before them. Allow them, again, to communicate what they need to take care of clearly, but also calmly. We love you, Lord, and we thank you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Love you, Brian.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring this meeting to order. Susan, take a note that we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is a reading of approval of the minutes from the April 8th, 2025 council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second? Any comments or discussion? Very well. Have all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So moved, thank you, council. Next up is the reading and approval of the minutes from the April 15th, 2025 special council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions about it? Very good, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So moved, thank you, council. Next up is brief comments. Again, it's not a discussion, just brief comments from city council members. Janine, like always, we will start with you. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one comment. I received a letter from the Honorable House of Representatives, Carol Miller. And I'm just gonna read just a brief portion of this. It says, "Thank you for your unwavering commitment to excellence and your genuine care for the people you serve. You are not only a leader, but also a role model to all who aspire to make a positive difference in the world. Please know that your contributions do not go unnoticed and your legacy of service will continue to inspire generations to come. And sincerely, Lady Carol Miller, Member of Congress." So that was nice.
That is very nice.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you. Sorry, I didn't use the mic.
I'm just wondering where the hat is tonight. Uh oh.
She's got no hat on my head.
Kim?
Just real brief, I talked to Leslie before we came in. Black and white golf courses opening May 1st in Italy, correct?
Not in Italy.
Not in Italy?
Really? Pretty sure.
Alright.
Good stuff.
Unless I'm wrong soon.
Alright, and then Mr. Gerald informed me that he's got a quote for Starland for your wifi down at the campground.
Really?
That's what he informed me just before he walked in. And then something else, I just-
Eight year, not ten years.
Well, we got a quote.
He got a quote for you.
Yep.
And just another thing, maybe directed towards Mr. File. If we're approached to be on a board of some community, community thing, should we talk to you or Shirley? See if it's a conflict of interest before we-
If you feel it's a conflict, a possible conflict, contact me.
Okay, alright, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Frank?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Donnie for inviting me to a meeting that we had this evening concerning a couple houses over in East Park. I appreciated him and his, what's the other lady's name? Number one lady?
Gina.
Gina. I mean, they did a, we had a real, a forum meeting concerning that, trying to get some things over and I should appreciate it. And also, thanks to Public Works, they did an outstanding job, again, with the cleanup. Y'all did an outstanding job, 'cause them men worked hard. And I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Frank. Nancy?
I'd like to thank Code. They helped me with a problem I had and the problem's been taken care of. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I see my junior high vice principal back there. Mr. Rapold. I still remember you. All the girls thought Mr. Rapold was very handsome. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to call you out.
Exactly what you did.
That's okay. And my neighbor's there.
Your blessing.
Me? I? Oh, wow, okay. I just wanted to say a few really positive things about what is happening in Uptown Beckley. I saw the production by the West Virginia Collective of Steel Magnolias and, and I cried, just like I cried when I watched the movie. It was a great production. If you haven't seen it, you still have a chance. They're back on the 24th. So if you haven't seen it, go. My son came in, we shopped local stores. We shot Centister, which is on Prince Street. If you haven't been, you should go. We shot the Birm Book Sellers, on, also on Prince Street. They have a lot of vinyl, that's how we wound up there. Vinyl records are coming back for us boomers that know what that means. We also shot The Peddler. I think I probably annoyed my son by singing every time I pulled an album out of a stack. But guys, if we don't patronize the businesses in town, how can we complain when they don't make it? We've got to help the people who are trying to help revitalize Uptown. Now, this is not really a negative thing, but we've all been together for a while now. We're no longer new. When we started out, I felt like I was learning how to drive the pontoon for the first time. You oversteer and you oversteer and you go in a circle. I hope that we don't continue to go in a circle. We need to move past things that are past. So we need to draft ordinances, we need to get moving. Even if we start with baby steps and just make small things happen in our city, we've gotta get going now. So I know we can all work together, we have. We all get along, we might disagree, but we can agree to disagree. So I appreciate all the other council members and the mayor and all the good people that work here in this office. And everyone else, and all these people that make things happen.
And kind of on that same note, I don't know if anybody, if everybody knows it, but Future Forward is going on at the Beckley Raleigh County Convention Center. So you've got all these people, all the ears will be there trying to figure out what's Beckley's gonna look like in 10 years. I know some of us were there this evening for a little bit. But here's your chance, here's your opportunity to not just go and listen to what people have planned or what people want to see, but this is your chance to be part of the discussion. I mean, you've got a lot of big name peoples. I know Will will be there, man in the booth, all day tomorrow. I know Janine and I will be there from eight to 10:00 and then after that. But I encourage everybody to go out to, you know, you don't have to go all day, but if you go out there for a couple hours, I guarantee it'll be worthwhile, so. Eight?
Is it $35 tomorrow?
It includes breakfast, lunch, everything else, but you can get tickets.
You got the exhibitors hall.
Right.
Oh, great, okay.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Jared, go ahead.
Okay. There have been so many great things happening in Beckley. Of course, Pam is right there picking up, making sure Board of Public Works gets the things that are from litter sweeps. And we're so appreciative. Today, 32 students at Stratton Elementary did a litter sweep around their community. I think that's so awesome. For Stratton Elementary. Today, we had Piney Creek Watershed in the channel at Cranberry Creek with the trash trout and people in the creek picking up trash. I would be remiss if I did not say happy Earth Day to everybody. April 22nd is Earth Day, so reduce, reuse, and recycle. But I, it gives this body a great honor in being able to acknowledge someone tonight. So you gotta think about this. There are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of young men that are playing high school soccer. Hundreds. But you know, hundreds. But there's only one West Virginia High School Soccer Player of the Year as acknowledged by the West Virginia Sports Writers Association. I'm very proud to read this on behalf of the City of Beckley. Certificate of Achievement. This acknowledges that Kobe Dillon is the 2025 West Virginia High School Soccer Player of the Year named by the West Virginia Sports Writers Association. We would like to present Kobe and his family a certificate and Kobe a challenge coin. And I want to show you, on the front page of the Register Herald Sports section, "On Tax Day, Kobe", there you are for everyone to see. And then not only that, check this out. Kobe Dillon's all over social media. So we are so proud that this body can acknowledge you, Kobe, because you know there are hundreds, but we claim you as ours. So please come forward. Please move forward, family, so we can hit your picture.
And state champs, right?
And state champs.
Were you the one that scored the goal in one second, right? Ah, where's that?
And I love this sub headline. Junior was key part of state championship run. So let me get a picture of you all right here with everybody. That is a beautiful picture right there. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I know you love city government, but you are not required to stay for the rest of the meeting. If you guys want to be dismissed, we understand. And coaches, thank you all so much for everything. Thank you. Mr. Penix, thank you so much. Thank you.
This might be the first and last time. I don't have really much tonight. Really, the only thing I'm thankful for, Mr. Gerald coming in and being able to have this workshop we're having next Tuesday and, you know, doing, kind of echo what Natalie was saying, you know, I think it's time for us to buckle in and start making some changes. We're past that, that beginning stage. We have city manager in place that, you know, we're willing to work with. So I think, I'm just happy for the future. I think we're ready to start rocking and rolling as a group. And I think this is probably going to be one of the strongest councils that's ever set up here, so.
Very good.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Gerald?
Thanks for being here. Thank you for all your hard work and your diligence for the city. I just got back from the Future Forward Expo and several issues came up about the city and I had to respond. One of the issues was parking. And I said, if you, the other issue was land banks and the other issue was rails to trails. So I addressed all those issues and let them know that we was, that you was actually voting on a second ordinance tonight pertaining to parking. Also let them know that Mr. File's working on land banks and we have been in contact with CSX, so. Pertaining to rails to trails, so. So I just like to mention those things.
Very good. Alright, thank you, council. Moving on to old business. First up is the second reading and public hearing of the ordinance established free two-hour on-street parking in downtown Beckley. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. File for a little bit more on that.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Tonight will be the second reading. We had the first reading on April the 8th. And if passed tonight, following a public hearing, it will go into effect immediately. And this is an ordinance that basically establishes free two-hour parking throughout downtown Beckley. And what it does is it not only establishes the free two-hour parking, it does not change, though, where there are 15-minute signs. People can still park for 15 minutes in those, those locations. And if somebody has reserved a spot on the city and there is a sign there confirming it's been reserved, that remains. So those that, that already are paying monthly will be entitled to continue to use those spaces. And this is something that we can change, council can change at a later date. We'll see how this works. What I'm gonna do right now is read the title of this ordinance and then we'll conduct a public hearing and see if anybody has any comments. This ordinance is titled, "Ordinance Establishing Free Two-Hour On-Street Parking in Downtown Beckley". And I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if anybody in the public has any comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance. Yes, ma'am?
While I can appreciate the two-hour free parking, I think it will be great for downtown businesses. I don't appreciate the origin of this ordinance. This should have originated from the Parking Commission and not from this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments either in favor of or in opposition? There being none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Mr. File. At this point, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any additional comments from council about this? Any questions for Mr. File before we vote? Okay, great. Very good. All those in favor of adopting the free two-hour park, street parking in downtown Beckley, please say aye.
Aye.
If anyone's opposed, say nay. Most cares, thank you, council. Next up is new business. And first up, we got receipt of bids for asphalt, concrete, stone, abrasive sand, and reinforcement rods. There's four bids, I believe. So I will unseal these. And Cheryl, I brought my own glasses, like you was it? I'll have to wear yours, Sadak. Okay, bear with me, let me make sure I'm reading this right. The first quote's from Appalachian Aggregates in Lewisburg, out of Lewisburg, West Virginia. It looks like the Class 1, $12.50 per ton. I don't know if that's for the asphalt or the concrete. See if you can tell. And then the second one is graded stone at $18 per ton. But I'm not sure about the Class 1. Does anybody know more about that?
Is that grade 1 asphalt?
It just says Class 1, that's all it says.
For how much?
$12.50 per ton.
Ain't no way.
The size of the stone, did you say?
Oh, the freight, and then delivered would be $27 per ton. And the graded stone would be $32.50 per ton. So I'll pass that on to-
Can I ask Pam a question while you're doing that?
Absolutely, yeah, go ahead.
Pam, I've got a request for some streets to be paved. How do we go about getting them on a list or whatever?
We've already have a list right now for this year of what we're proposing to Mr. Money Man and what we would like to do. We can look at them and if we agree that, if they're in bad shape, we can go ahead and put it out.
Okay.
Can't guarantee, we start with a large list. We'll sometimes get 12, 15 streets done, depending on the budget available and, and how much asphalt available.
Okay, well, I can understand that.
We have started the list right now. I have our street inspector putting it in priority order right at the moment. But if we like to email the streets in question, I'll see if we're already on the list.
Okay, I will.
Did we get the paver?
Okay.
Have we bought the paver yet?
The paver has been purchased. It will be delivered the third day and draining will be next week.
Very good. Thank you. Alright, the second bid is from Southern West Virginia Paving. Same thing, just make sure I'm reading it correctly. This is for materials to be used by Department of Public Works, West Virginia Department of Highway specification asphalt base 2 or patching at $106 per ton, leveling 1 at $110 per ton, wearing 1 at $110 per ton, curb mix $150 per ton, antenna spex at $150 per ton. And it just says all materials can be picked up at the asphalt plant located across from Southern Regional Jail. Third bid is from Tripway Paving and Ceiling out of Princeton, West Virginia. And this is for asphalt material bid. Base 2 at $93 per ton, leveling 1 at $94 per ton, and wearing 1 at $94 per ton. And the last bid also from, out of Princeton, West Virginia, Premier Concrete. So it would just be concrete at 2,500 PSI, it's 185. 3,000 PSI, 190. 3,500 PSI, 195. And 4,000 PSI, 200. They've got- I'm gonna take it, read that with my glasses. Let me see if there's anything else on here. So it looks like standard fee schedule, $325 fuel charge, things like that, but that's pretty much it. Unless you see something else that needs red, you fill.
No, I think that's, yeah, that's just, yeah, so it's just concrete.
And as always, all four bids will be reviewed by our two city council members-at-large, Director of Board of Public Works Pam Frye, our interim recorded treasurer Jessica Chandler for possible award at a future council meeting.
And may I say something?
Yeah.
Department of Transportation also, State Department of Transportation also has bids for asphalt. And we'll be comparing this against state contracts, see if we can get a better price.
Thank you, Mr. Gerald. Okay, next up on new business is the first reading of ordinance, changing the start time of regular council meetings from 6:30 PM to 5:30 PM. Still be on the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays of each month. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. File.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, what I'll do in just a minute is read this ordinance by title for first reading. If passed tonight, we will have second reading and a public hearing on this ordinance on May the 13th, which will be our next council meeting. And as the mayor stated, what this ordinance does, this changes the time we start these meetings and they will now, they will begin at 5:30 PM instead of 6:30 PM. And that only deals with the regular council meetings, which we have twice a month on the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays. This ordinance is titled, "Ordinance Changing Starting Time of Regular Meetings of Beckley Common Council from 6:30 PM to 5:30 PM on 2nd and 4th Tuesdays of each month." Mayor?
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved. Second?
Okay, any comments from council? Any questions for Mr. File on this?
So Mr. File, the second reading would be on the 13th. Would that take effect at the next meeting, which would be the 27th? Is that when?
It would.
I do have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
What was the reasoning to change the hours, Mr. File, from 5:30 to 6:30?
Well, it was changed 10 years ago, this, from 7:30 to 6:30, to see if this helped. And I think it did help changing. This will give members of council an opportunity to enjoy more of the evenings instead of being here at a later time. It will also be convenient, should be convenient to the public. There is a period of time between 4:30 or 5:00 and 6:30 that a lot of people don't have time to fix dinner, to go home and, and do what they choose to do. This will allow them to do that after these meetings are over. But it's basically for the convenience of, of all parties, including the public and council. And if this is something that council, after they attempt, the SDF approved tonight and at the next meeting, can always be changed, it can be reversed if that's the desire of council.
Now I can make a comment.
Sure.
I think that with people wanting to go to Board of Education meetings, oftentimes they start at 5:30. Do they start at 5:30? Mr. Gerald? A lot of times, people go to those meetings and then come quickly to council. And so while I appreciate the comments that it's good for council and the public, I think that, having said that, that there would be, like, I, I get off work at 4:30, I get home, I freshen up and I get here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look a mess. And so I try not to look a mess anyway, but, anyway. But I think that 6:30 works better for the general public. I, I do like the fact that we've gone from 7:30 to 6:30, but I'm, I'm leery that that would put people not being able to, that's just my comment, that's just-
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I, I think the obvious, I think, like you said, most people get off work at 4:30 or 5:00 and then what do we do? We just hang around and, and wait till 6:30? It, it just seems to make sense. That's when most people get off work, it'd be easier. People still have a half hour, plenty of time to get here. But that's just my opinion. Anybody else from council have any?
That and the nine o'clock nights are getting a little late getting home, you know?
Especially if we have Parking Commission meeting afterward.
Yeah, especially with Parking Commission, I agree.
Anyone else from council want to comment on it, or?
So the Board of Education meets at 5:30 instead of 4:30? I thought they had changed.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30?
And it only lasts like an hour? Less than an hour? I mean, I haven't seen too many people straggling in at 6:45. Just, I could be wrong. Frank, anything else?
No, I can see the pros and cons to both of it. But I think the, the shortening of it gives us just a longer time to get things accomplished and it still won't be quite as dark as it normally was. Or will be.
Okay, with that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of changing the start time for city council meetings from 6:30 to 5:30, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is the public comments. We just got a few tonight. Just like I always say, you got three minutes, please try to keep it to that. We've had some in the previous city council meetings that ran way past that. So Jessica, please let me know when it's 2 minutes 30 seconds. I will let the speaker know when it's 2 minutes and 30 seconds and you'll know you have about 30 seconds to wrap everything off. The last thing I want to do is cut somebody off. I know we had a gentleman, that was a very big issue. The passer from, I can't remember the name of the street, but anyway, I thought it was a great-
Hartley.
Hartley, yes. And to me, that's an important issue. And, and so we let him go a little bit longer, but let's just try to keep it at three minutes. And with that, I'll ask Mary West to come up first. And while, Mary West, Anthony, if you want to check and see if there's people online, or by phone, let me know.
Good evening.
Okay, I'll announce it after. Go ahead, Mary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, you all were just talking about the meetings for the Board of Education and thus. Why can't we go the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday in the month? Because some of us would like to go to the Board of Education meeting. And it seems like that you all got both meetings set to keep some of us from one or the other meeting. And I mean, you know, I, I used to attend the Board of Education meetings just like I did these, but I'm one person. Can't split this in half and have one here and one there. Okay, and another thing, those speed humps. I want to know when you guys are coming down there and fixing those in my neighborhood. And it should be three across, and we're short four because down by the one that he took up out of the last time, we need three across there, too. So that's what I am talking about right now. Now, as far as the trees that the city no longer say they own, Now, as far as the trees that the city no longer say they own, I am paying to have those taken down, so you all can at least come down and fix those speed humps, because I'm gonna have that taken, that, those trees taken down, and everything carried away, the city won't have to hear about that again. If you all can do those speed humps, I would appreciate it, because I am tired of seeing cars running between, dropping one tire in between it and riding over one, going across the road doing the same thing, uh, coming around just about in my yard. And when that happens, I'm not threatening anybody, I'm just gonna promise you all. Yep. Chiefs can't get down there fast enough, I'm gonna pay double to the judge, 'cause when he give me my fine, I'm gonna throw it at him and say, here's double, 'cause I'm gonna get him again going out the door. So you all need to fix that situation. People coming through blowing five in the morning, they ain't waking me up, I'm already up. They waking my other neighbors up, just to agitate me. And have, have, you know, saying things all on social media. So fix those things, please. I would appreciate it wholeheartedly. Yes?
I said, we'll look into it. Well, I didn't say it, but I was about to say it.
No, you sure didn't, you just...
I was about to say it.
Okay.
But then I thought you had something else to say.
Well, what else I have to say?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Uh, change the meetings, please, so that we all can attend both of them. Don't have to worry about them.
Thank you. Uh, before I call up the next speaker, if you are listening in by phone or connected by computer, um, by phone, just hit star three to raise your hand if you'd like to speak, public comments. Connected by computer, just click the hand icon on your participants panel, and Anthony will monitor that.
Sorry.
All right, sorry, next, Tom Mosley. Come on.
Good afternoon. Okay, before I, I talk about what I want to speak on, I want to say this is not a knock on Leslie Baker Department, she does a wonderful job with the sources she has available. That being said, my wife and I have a three-year-old granddaughter that we take to local parks. I got the privilege of going with them the other day and visited New River Park, and I'd like to make some suggestions, okay? Uh, while the playground equipment is amazing, uh, it gets hot. About noon during the day, it gets very hot, so I don't know if there's some kind of a tarp, something, something to go over one of them. Uh, secondly, uh, children and older adults need bathroom facilities, and there's chains across the bathroom facilities up there. So I don't know if it's something we could get a parking attendant, I mean, a park, a park attendant, even to check a couple times a day to check the bathrooms, but we need restrooms. Also, uh, New River Park is the heart of our city, okay? It's the ambiance. Now, you look over this, and you see Public Works, you see all of Public Works. So I don't know if we get the fence up, if there's something just to change the ambiance. I mean, you walk out of the park, and there you see Public Works. So this is just some suggestions. Uh, there's a couple picnic tables and things up there that need some attendance, uh, but the park's beautiful. You know, I'm not knocking the park or what Leslie Baker and her department do. I'm just thinking, you know, in terms of finally figuring out what it is to have a three-year-old in the park thirty years later, that there are some things that need some change. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Christina Basden.
Hello, Christina Basden. First, I want to thank you for the efforts and transparency. Um, the agenda and the supporting documents were there online today, and thank you. Um, second, Danielle Stewart had about twenty-five people come here, either in email or in person, um, to be considered for the city manager. Um, she sent email responses to every single one of you, and she received not one response, not a thank you. That required some human decency, in my opinion, and, uh, as a twenty-three-year veteran, she deserved better than what she got. Uh, third, Public Works, morale is absolutely terrible. Everybody wants to thank, uh, Public Works about the spring cleanup, and we have half staff, and they are working their butts off to do twice the amount of work. If these people continue to go unappreciated, we are going to have to just have a consistent turnover. So if we're not going to hire more people and get fully staffed, then we need to give the existing folks a raise, um, since they are doing that amount of work. The council meeting changes. Education is an absolute dumpster fire right now in Raleigh County with all of these cuts, and we are seeing departments fully defunded. Who asked for the hour change from this council? My last and most important is due process. We've seen a lot of things on the national level and on a state level about processes being bypassed. I have come to this council about prayer, Roberts rules, executive sessions, overriding committees, and processes in general, and the Open Meetings Act. That continues to still be here as a deterrent of why you don't have to respond to constituents, the people that elected you, that you are here to represent. You are not here for power and prestige. So far, a lot of times, this council has bowed to the power of others, but you are the strong council, you are the keeper of the purse strings, so I hope you have the courage to hold the line when fascism comes knocking at your door. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, we got anybody? All right, very good. Uh, next item on the agenda, executive session regarding a personnel issue. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Sure move. Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, great. Tell some jokes or something. Say, tell some jokes or something.
Hold the line in. Do a dance or something. Sorry. I take notes for it, too, if you need me to. I know, right? Just thought he was going somewhere.
That one needs to go, that's up. It's very dry. It's very dry.
Thanks for asking.
I know she's... I don't recall that far from down the road. We're talking about... We're talking about... Happy Easter, I guess. Happy Easter and, uh, and, uh, I mean, it's named what I say, this year's talk, like I, like, cross from him, and it's just, like, the side that they were helping him. It's the same, so, and it's all...
We're the...
Very, very nice.
No, God, I heard. I've heard you go out using, like, an assistant in it now.
I heard you do that, I guess, and it's...
I've heard you, uh, in case you're, uh, number one.
Yeah, like, maybe a woman.
So, they know, like, Tom.
I know, I, I watch it.
I said it last night.
It's a laser, it's a red laser.
It's like everybody else.
It's a bay.
We don't, oh, okay.
I like that, come, they go, they can store.
Because you sit in the beginning of the trial before the motions.
I'm talking, I'm talking to Mr. Anderson. I should ask him about today, but I'm...
I don't know when they lost. But if we get to it from Florida, we can still be here.
Uh, I mean, we don't have to concern three, but it's not, it's, 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 it's a protest, you know? Because I've been, this is, I've been in this, uh, and nothing, ever.
Y'all played it as a... It's a whole...
I still walk in the woods.
I'm gonna try to get something done, but it's, it's, it's gonna not, that...
We all...
Yeah.
My last one. Uh, well... I don't know, I think, oh, they should, no? Well, good. It's not gonna... Dog, I'm talking to my dad. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, yeah, I know. You look, right over the, right over the, right over the...
Yeah.
Everything was...
I had all this, where, you know, I had this one, I had this one.
So, yeah.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
I did. I'm having a baby, I'm sure. We had a Easter egg, it was an after... Did you, well, congratulations!
Oh, and it's like, it is the best, uh, we have to start when, whatever, it's grand season. And then we have an eye or something, yeah.
I used to, yeah, it's, it's not mine, it's...
Did you have to go to the, one place, found you in Twitter?
Yeah, I did. See, John, they take them to the apartment, and we all, I've been there.
She's, she's...
She's, she's... It's hard, I wanna, put right in, the same, do it like, girl, like, that one. Those, oh, so, go out there, screw down there, right there. How bad, how bad is that, it's a blast. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I don't, I'm terrible. Boy, you're terrible. That's your car. I think, I think, yeah. Oh, my God. Hopefully, you're making, I'm here, you know, I'm not, I'm not selling me, or, like, you, it's, 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 you're, 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 you're comfortable, and then after that, you're, 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 you're... I'm putting guns down. I can't get together. I'll let you know. Oh, yeah, they got... You too, they forgot. But they did see, they did see, they did see.
I want to give you new tires.
Like, I brought a lot of them, too.
All the tires, all the new ones.
He got, I 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 got, yeah. I got, 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 seriously, no, what's it, you know, I don't know. It's snack time. I'm saying, I'm hungry.
It's good.
What's, uh, our, 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 you really don't have to...
I'm going to...
This last one's out.
I didn't want to just say, hey, so, rumor, so...
I just think, so, I just, 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 I
What, what business does Randy K start at Trump's house?
Do you imagine you know how to get open? So they're still. You've already said it. Oh, she doesn't, thank you. Just a little.
I can say twelve hundred dollars.
I had to, I had to get that right.
That's a lot. Twelve hundred bucks.
Eight more dollars.
He's probably earning four, twelve hundred dollars.
Is he still?
He's gotta do it for all. I'll do it for a thousand. Come on.
You don't even know where the. I mean, you can message.
Hey, you find anything good?
The attitude closed and something.
I could even hire dogs. So we can split five hundred dollars and still get around on that.
See, then.
Smoke.
I gotta know what you're doing. No, this works in purpose, like put oil in the trenches. Well, he thought he was, then when I found out Dean would be working on somebody else's.
Right by the road, right, you're at the side of his man's house, the person's house out of the manhole. So we, I mean, I mean, it's very good. Okay. And so I decided. And they saw into the roadway and called her. I have not. I have.
Then you hit that up and get a man. Baby. Baby.
This was. But they got.
I mean, I've been done.
Oh, but I never got.
Where was that?
I'm reading.
I don't even have to know what you're talking about. You have. You've got concert, that's concert. Well, what? Yeah.
I work on my. He can speak louder and ask them. And if they're caught, they have to come. Like you said, I'm home. I'm here. I know it's more than work. We can help. We got two guys now that has to study. Nothing has to done, but you're a father too. It's got, there's a physical there. Yeah. They're trying to fix that. Try to help. I just said I had to place my, uh, swing guard and you know what, your swing guard. And it was my swing guard. I like as bad as it is now, I don't look at it. I mean, I'm not having a child, but you know, like. Yes. I was two months in the airport. I went everywhere to see some cops, uh, of which state. And it's not on my display. As long as, uh, over there, the queen. But this has been, uh, I've been, you know, this I all. Three years that I've noticed this, you know, three and a half years, I've been trying to be someone. Yeah, well, I've got all of your time that would do this. I'll close them all with dawn and sack that. And I'll. I mean, I was hit several times every day down from, uh, to the road, uh, to the, uh, over. I said, I'm a corporation. I go straight down, I have to stop sign. Like there's a lot of public, like Texas road. It's the main thing, main area, I'm not just wanting to be the one. I said, I said, I'm going to explain the main ones. And I stopped and I'm like, I'm sorry, but I'm so, I'm so, it's like, they don't have time. I'm going to my schoolhouse. I don't think you can see me. I have to. That's all we got. But, but. Oh, I mean, it's. Well, you get all the ones. Yeah. I'm there. But you don't. I'm, I'm. I can't be on, but I'm just glad. He's coming in. Yeah. So the, the. They bumped into that, uh, academy, I don't, goes that way, I go. But it goes to me. The man. It's what's always the top two. They, they say they.
I don't want any, I just want to put my stuff.
Somebody. I mean, yeah.
Now we're making this, this, this girl, we gotta play season this. I called the first six.
She said, well, I know. You're. Oh.
I mean, thirteen.
My. Debbie's dead. Yeah, my brother takes. Cause I'm. John. Yeah. John. Say. And then I'm saying, I'm saying, here, just how loud I'm saying. Here, when they're here. Well, some of them. I mean, they're, they're mountainous. I really, to me, they look like it looks like a mega push. But it was some type of snake or something. I guess that was. But anyway, once busted, we had a leg. Oh, it was like a, a. I had to do this girl. I don't have. I love it. Saturday. Potential passenger. After we got there, after. It'd be like. And after she said. Yes, it's definitely.
I'm just. She's so much better. No, there's. Let's know that they're.
She's. I'm sure. I should. Oh, it's fine. Never. I told her. I'm sure. They get it. Yeah. The only rule here is what they. He got chickens. He got chickens.
No, they're too old to play.
Robbie, Robbie is a real.
I'm playing, uh, I'm playing, uh, see, they were four. What is good beside me? Don't be shy. I just always get chickens out. We just have nothing out there. She just always shit herself. Bobby always just get hot. You paint, we're closer, I mean.
I need to get. I remember when the final.
So this one's three.
And I. Four at a time when we had.
It's not so hard to do. It's a little hard. All right. Yeah, now wait. I was, and I, I, I. Yeah. For years. I say it's there.
Where do you go?
Winners, that's why I pissed out little gold star. Don't it's. You have. No, ever since the. I was. But.
Well, we have, yeah. When we have.
A, a, a son, take.
Salafar, yeah, Johnny's gone.
He tag. So he took it in there and he.
We're open for, uh, ten, ten.
I'm saying, and they asked him. You don't have black. You don't can. Look at, uh.
The rich ladies.
Yeah, yeah, he's, yeah. They're black, black. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, they just, they just stand there. Once he got it, he'll see. I'm like, I, I. Yeah. But she did that every day. But anyway, I'm, uh, today, it was, it was great. Someone was parked in the accident. Five years old. And I came back my car and I saw. My favorite. Was Hannah's. They never looked and I'm like. She just wanted to stay. He inside car, we pulled it from my. It's definitely. In that area. Um. About the TV and the. Do I have this? When you go back into my office. So I. Get the. Put that to the area, just. Well, yeah. No, he was like. Well, they call their practice. I'm like, I'm hurt. She that all we.
Where we gonna put it for that place?
Isn't it a mixed object? Yeah. I don't mean that. I don't say that. I wrote it tomorrow, take a story. What I'm just. But if I. No, because I think. Put it in the town. I was getting off, I set up my car, opened the doors off. We check. And then I used to do the magic, I'm taking them out. He's right here at the coffee area and right outside of bathroom. So I'll go back to there, but he's in there. Otherwise, I'm going to cheat on him. Cheat on him. I would, I would cheat bad for you. It's fun. But that's, there, I'm not. As, as a. And, you know, it's open constant. So, so. Then. The corporations. And once.
So the one that stood there and dressed up. Eight all those. Cause. Seen her. Seen her.
Not yet. On bail. Yeah. But I always.
Making.
Anyway. Was it their. Uh. Yeah. Cause he's still. I also. But. I opened my mouth and I didn't realize. You know. Just. I screamed out. Yeah. So and I saw. The last time I went to. I forgot she. Or was. She was in there. Coffee shop in here. And it. Cause I went. And I saw. Lighted up. And I saw. Uh. Blood on the paper and. And whole paper. She's head. She's. So I got out. I reported. I got out there. Yeah. Yo, you. You help him out. Yeah. Bye. And then we. Yeah, I see that. That, that, that's. Mary's request is. And it's like. We should go up and. Post speaking. And there's a. We. But that's good. The nature. I know nothing, but I will. I will. Support everybody else's.
That's why the Kurzvilles were so good.
In a way. Jen's.
The. You should be a boy Caribbean and has. A beach.
Five hours okay or the first. That actually seemed like. I couldn't. Change today. So you. Are you. Then she was asking. Said no, they.
Our vacations are based.
Sure. That's why. Five hours. Or they. It's a six thirty. Those are six thirty. And then they have. A photo. He and. They have a lot of photos.
He doesn't like this. And then.
But we need. But I think.
Yeah, that's the most.
Request. Choose. The first. Yeah. I don't really. Because they. They.
Yeah. But. I don't know anything. It is so. It doesn't touch you at all. But I will. And then there's. As you see them, they're really how many of them.
Sherry. Forty years. I see most. I skip over. But I'm always.
And it's. And it's.
We're gonna have to. All in together. For. Okay. We only. We need to speak up.
That's what you say. The great.
Did not change. We need to speak up here. I need to speak up here. Uh. For the just. We need to. Man. It doesn't. It's. It don't affect me at all. So. Stand up.
And you say this is. He don't hear me. There.
And I.
I don't wanna click on.
I haven't understand that. She didn't say she didn't hear you because she knows where she are. And she had to. She didn't get fucked up. Yeah. Sure. I told you.
I'm observing.
Like. I hope you will stand up. No. I hope you. I hope you all will stand up when this. Next time. Of course. Stand up. I'm.
But. I'm. When I was doing my. And I'm there.
Most people's stories. But.
Must have been up to. And he got changed.
Well, you know what?
Like.
The person. Yeah. I went to a person.
Yeah. I mean, I. In this. Looks totally. What is that? Yeah. Okay. What's the curse at two? You know what? No, not even close. Oh.
It looks like.
Close to.
Okay. Yeah.
I used. You know.
Oh, I do too.
I can't tell you. When I was seven. Uh. And look how many times I've tried. I got all the rest of. I'll just. It's funny you should mention.
Yeah.
I did teach you that about that. Not that on Facebook.
You married and you get charged.
Did you see it on Facebook? It's a while back. I can't. I, I did that. Uh. First January. Oh, okay. Yeah. She stays. I mean, just. Daniel. Didn't have time.
And Dutch up on stage. She just. Why girls. Her.
Yeah. It's like. Doesn't affect me. Doesn't affect me at all. Oh. I'm in trouble. But. Others. Yeah. And so. It's like. I was going trying to get food. My friend. See, that's all. I, I, I was just going trying to get food for the. Help them to get food. Cause they got a big family. And they have a long way to go. I just. I, I was. That's what I was going to. Get food. To meet up with them. That's what I was. But that's okay. Guys. Um. They're doing good. They're good. You know. I. So.
A lot of those programs.
The mayor of practice. Will it take this? No, bar.
You love me.
Oh, I think this thing.
There's nine people that I become. So much. I, I think of nine. And when I'm gone. There's nobody do. Cause. Seven of them don't drive. Um. And one has very. It's. I mean. Truck. Use it. I mean. The gas is just. They, they. The. Mileage he gets or is just. And the other. She's. And. She can't. She's called Sydney. She. She died in twenty eight.
You giving it up though herself? Does it?
And I made up. Well. Anyway. There's. John. New office. We get the radio station revolving. At the corner there. Is Donnie. 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 And he's with the Saint.
Now.
That's a high.
Oh, hey. Somewhere. But.
You be safe.
I'm out with him. He has a lot of programs going on there. Uh. And. I told him, you know. About that issue. You know. We was talking about that thing. He said. He. Give him information. Maybe. He said he'll take that. He's got five. He'll go get those nine boxes for people when I leave. I'm like.
Because I don't drive nobody up.
No, me neither. Well, they come and get it down the car. Have it.
I'll make you a copy.
Yeah.
You want a screen.
That was Donald.
What is it?
You want to say.
Tricked by a pistol. Uh. Ask.
All the string.
Something. Possible trip for every day is called. Uh. Max Lee. Donald. He's got. Hey. He's got the. Non profit businesses. And. He gave away shoes. Gave away more. Uh. When the school starts. Kids and adults. Pair of shoes for Kenny. Been on a pair of shoes for another friend. And. He has a couple thirteen men's shoes that got them. Um.
And they can have their page to. Yeah. We were talking about. I'm just. Well, right now, though, if they take the. On the main street. Say one hour. Right? Change that one to two. But then you got all those.
Oh, Sean. Was sixty. I mean. They. Dan. Fine.
Yes. You know. Nephew. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Nobody. You just can't. Somebody's want kids. Kids in the. Trying to avoid that. Somebody else coming up. Why don't you? You're late. Playin' it off. My passion.
Oh. Yeah.
They didn't want to do that.
Then something about. So. Streets. Yeah.
Three minutes.
We got four minutes. Well.
Exactly.
Down for something.
As I am.
I think it's always. First. Go back. Fix yourself. No. You know. Oh.
I don't know. Get me out of reach. The response. Every time we say that she. You know, it's called. Being. Have a joy. Show.
Yes. You would need to stop. He is often speaking about. She took all the food.
I just can't.
They always speak about it. She had it all packed up. I was taking.
I would too. If you don't. These people went downstairs. Packed all.
This is always. Come to the house. And I'm looking. Everything. One day I guess. Upstairs.
Oh, what about you?
Oh.
Wait. Tell me. Tell me.
Which one? Talk about. When it's. Bush.
How did you find it? This question. And you jump out. Oh, why don't I take out the pot? You just jump in there.
They ate dinner. Uh. She's coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wish. It was.
Is my eye bulging right now? Is my eye bulging right now?
We still being there. Supposedly just walked out. I was like.
We were actually back there taking a bet on who was gonna be gone when we came out. You guys will stay with us. I'm just joking. Stop. Oh, my lord.
What? He's sitting right here. There you go. I'm gonna make. Parking commission's lasting an hour now. Cause of them comments. I'm hungry.
I forgot.
Always last, Mr. Fowler. Always last.
Sherry said. She said.
You did what we're gonna do. Whatever.